Good evening. It's 6:30 and I will call this meeting to order. The secretary will call the role of each board member. Please respond by saying "here."
Kenny Kofelt.
Here.
Scott Gardner.
Here.
Matthew Heron.
Here.
Sam Kimpton.
Here.
Michael Stees.
Here.
Barbara Schrader is here. Diana Nichols.
Here. And now if you will please stand at attention and face the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we will move to our recognitions and presentations section. This evening, we have First Sergeant Chad Supanich with the JROTC to make a presentation.
Members of the board, members of the audience, good evening. As she said, I am First Sergeant Supanich. I'm one of the instructors in the JROTC program. So out of Washington, there is an organization called the Legion of Valor. In order to be a member of the Legion of Valor, you have to be a Medal of Honor recipient or a recipient of each and every individual services highest of all. Every year, this organization recognizes the top of the top JROTC cadets with an award called the Bronze Cross for Outstanding Achievement. It's based off of academic achievement, achievement within the JROTC program, and your surveying service. The award itself is awarded to roughly one out of every 4,000 cadets. This year, this award is being presented to Cadet Goodwin for her service in the JROTC program.
Congratulations, Cadet Goodwin. Again, just in case those didn't hear, this is a very, very high award, very prestigious award, one of approximately 4,000 JROTC cadets across our country out of 100 schools. So, very prestigious, an extreme high honor, and we're very, very proud of you. Congratulations.
Okay, public and staff comments. Anyone from the audience that would like to speak is welcome to do so when that item comes up on the agenda. At that time, you may approach the podium. You will be asked to provide your name and indicate that's the item you wish to address. Remarks may be limited to three minutes and to one appearance at the podium. Also, if anyone in the audience has any printed correspondence they would like to share with board members, you can leave that with Mr. Satin at the media table. And the first is Sedalia School District Foundation, Chris Aldeedra.
Okay, just like three quick things. First of all, yay, we got through the first day of school. So, we were pretty excited about that. I want to thank one of our board members, Carla Limbaugh, as well as our secretary, Paula Shoup, who worked tirelessly on those signs I showed you at the last board meeting to provide first day of school pictures. We got through it, didn't we, Bob? We got through it. And most of the schools have chosen to keep their signs to use for future projects. So, it was just something fun that we got to do and we really enjoyed doing that. So, the thing is, we got our treat bags out. We packed over 725 treat bags for all the district staff and the bus barn. And all the board members went out and made those deliveries last week. And we were excited to do that. It's just that, you know, we haven't been able to have our breakfast. And it was just something fun that we'll continue to do probably even if we don't have our... If we have our breakfast next year, we'll probably still continue to do that. So, that was fun. Lastly, you know, Missouri Magazine came out with Missouri Best today, most of the winners. And I just want to say a special congratulations. There was a lot of local winners on the list, including Bob Satin, who doesn't even write a newspaper column anymore, but he's still named, you know, newspaper columnist of Missouri. But Kelsey Wilson, the SMS teacher that was nominated and won the award for Teacher of the Year. I think that's outstanding when you have a staff member from the Sedalia 200. So, our congratulations go out to her. And I think that's it. Onda Homecoming.
Yes.
Right?
A little different this year, but Onda Homecoming. Sedalia Community Educators Association.
Hello. SCA is at the end of the membership kickoff. We'll be wrapping that up at the end of this month. And I just want to review our purpose. SCA is a local teacher organization for Sedalia 200. If a majority of staff have concerns, we want their voice to be heard. SCA focuses on issues that affect teachers and students and staff in the Sedalia 200 school district. The SCA Executive Board and building representatives are always striving to improve and make things better for Sedalia 200. With SCA membership and support, we can continue growing and contribute even more. We are all here together in the Sedalia 200 community. And I ask you today, if you have not already done so, please support your Sedalia Community Educators Association. Thank you.
Thank you. And if there are no changes to the agenda, I would like to hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then the consent agenda, there are seven items under consent agenda. If there are no additions, corrections, or questions on any item...
Move consent item to be approved.
Do I hear a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then the next items are up for decision. Mr. Pyle, the Title 1C.
Yes, from the information shared in your packet for our Board of Education, I would just like to point out publicly that we, you know, with that program evaluation, that our goal is to give all students that meet the criteria for migrant children and the Title 1C is just that we give those students the same opportunity that we give all of our students here. Our goal is to help them meet the graduation requirements and to help them meet the attendance requirements as well. Are there any questions from the program evaluation?
Will this report be approved?
I have a motion to approve from Scott. Any second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Mrs. Brownfield is coming up?
Good evening. I would like to first just give thanks and a shout out to our EL teachers, our program evaluation here. They went through a tremendous amount of changes last year. As you know, we originally were housed at the middle school and those teachers were able to concentrate on a one-grade level curriculum individually. And we decided it was best for our students to send them back to their buildings. And at that point, they then took back on the five grade levels in their home building. So, they went through some curriculum changes themselves and a learning curve. They did a phenomenal job with some of our EL students even being virtual as well. So, I've got some numbers on here for you. We saw about a 4% increase. Our EL students come in and out throughout the year, very transient. So, one of the things we like to do is just pull a number within the year that is more of a representative of what our numbers look like. So, that's the February number right before access testing for those students. So, even with that, we did see an increase. Some of our buildings, we saw a significant increase. Parkview typically ran about 46 students. And at one point this past year, we had 76. So, and it didn't really go down from there. We stayed 60s, 70s. So, we did some shuffling with some of our IAs to make that work for that building. One of the other big changes that we are making is that we are focusing on a new collaboration model, which means we are intentionally seeding more of our ESA EL students in the classroom that have already moved past the, I would say, the initial Level 1 and 2, the survival language, so that they can be more fully submerged to hear the academic language, to have more opportunities to have the social language with their peers. So, with that, that has taken on an extra professional development role where we've been helping our EL teachers learn that process, what it looks like to work more hand in hand with the classroom teacher, to provide them more of a coaching support with those students, a little bit more push-in. So, we're going to continue that process and collect data. We've reviewed data from other districts in the state, the state-level data, and this has been a very effective process. So, we're excited post, but moving forward from our moving them away from the SMS single-house facility to back in their home buildings. Were there any questions about the evaluations? Yes, sir.
I was looking at your major change about not busing the students and staying in their home school. Just to answer, how many minutes or hours per week did that save for additional instruction?
I would have to do the math on that, to be honest with you. I don't know the exact, because I wasn't part of EL in its original model being housed at SMS. So, when we shuffled them back, I'm not sure just exactly how many minutes they had at that building. But I can tell you now, they're in their building a lot more and they're getting that EL instruction onsite as needed.
Okay, thank you.
I remember it was, I mean, it would've been hours, you know, per week. So, I think it's a good model and I'm all in favor.
Yeah. I think our teachers did a really good job in the other model where we bused them, trying to stay focused as much as possible on the district curriculum. But it did take away from the opportunity for them to be in their building with their peers to be practicing that on a more regular basis. The other thing that I would like to mention is the data presented here does look at our proficiency levels of 4, 5, and 6. Typically, a student is fully English proficient when they get to a Level 7. But they do test out of EL services when they reach 4.7. So, in the past, I believe, the numbers have been presented by proficiency levels. We are actually, I don't want to use the word graded, but evaluated more on a growth model for our students when we look at our EL students. That we are graded potentially on, or the success of our program, on the number of students that we exit out. But in addition to that, there's a process using a formula on has that student reached their growth target for the state of Missouri? So, a typical, kind of, Missouri uses a formula based on an average of five years. So, an EL student on average will reach language proficiency within five years. Our younger students reach it much quicker because it's not as content-heavy. Our older students in secondary level, it takes them typically longer. So, we have a formula that we use for that growth target. And so, in the future, if it pleases the board, I would like to present you with the number of students that have met their growth target versus those that have not. I did provide an example of that as a supplemental document.
Are there any other questions?
No, I'd like to move that this program, this report be approved.
I need a second?
Second.
And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next item up for decision, Dr. Fraley, the financial audit.
Yes, thank you. As you know, annually, the district has to go through a financial audit. Ours are performed this year again by FIC, Eggmire, and Williamson CPAs, based out of St. Louis. There were no material weaknesses found in this year's audit, nor were there any significant deficiencies, which is less significant than the material weaknesses, but important enough to merit attention. So, none of those two were found. Say there was a control deficiency, which is a smaller weakness, that did not rise to a level of being reported in the actual audit. This was found in your management letter that's attached in the board minutes. One application for the National School Lunch Program in 2021 was incorrectly calculated. It was a mathematical error in food service, adding it up wrong. So, that was the only deficiency of any sort found in this year's audit. If you have any questions?
This other control deficiency about checks and everything, is there... I take it those checks have a pre-print signature. Is there a paper trail or a locked electronic trail showing who approved those checks?
On the free lunch?
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm on number two.
Oh, the significant deficiency?
The prior control deficiency, number two, it's on the next page.
From 2020?
Right.
Yes, it was the same error.
Okay.
And that is being addressed with the food service. It's human error. These forms are still done by hand. We have been, as many other districts across the country, would like this to be done electronically. But as to date, the USDA does not provide, it's all paper pencils still. So, which obviously allows for human error to occur. It's not set up in a Excel document with formulas that...
Yeah.
The check issuance procedures?
Yes. Oh, the other one, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. That was remedied last year. It was a matter of having an additional sign-off on the checks. That was something that the auditors brought to our attention after last year's audit and was brought to the board previously in that now we have a third sign-off, which is me, with all the expenses that we have to go through in our process. In previous years, that was not in place.
What I'm asking is, the check may have a variety of different signatures on there, but somewhere in the process, you're like, okay, in the program I use, I can just print the doggone check off, which obviously wouldn't pass here. But is there a record made that somebody has approved that check? And is that record locked?
Yes.
Okay.
That is kept in our office.
Okay.
And there's probably a purchase order that begins the whole paper trail.
Yes, purchase order, receipt backed up, the checks backed up, copies of the checks backed up. We have mountains of paper, believe me.
Are there any other questions, comments for Dr. Fraley? If not, I will hear a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Triplet, the Architect Services?
Yeah, the selection committee concluded the interviews. We had received interest from eight different architect firms across both Missouri and Kansas. We narrowed that list to three to interview. Interviews we held on August 30th and 31st. That committee was made up of myself, Mr. Kofelt, Dr. Fraley, Mr. Jason Curry, Bob Satin, Dennis Paul Septagon, Richie Simons, our Director of Buildings and Grounds. We interviewed Itner Cordigan Clark Group out of St. Louis, Hollison Miller Architects from Kansas City, and HTK Architects out of Overland Park, Kansas. Each group was allowed 75 minutes for their presentation and question and answers. We used a scoring rubric to grade and the criteria was based off of prior experience, the firm's organization, qualifications of the personnel assigned to our specific project, and responsiveness of the written proposal. The selection committee was unanimous in their score, their high score of Hollison Miller out of Kansas City at the top of the list. So, I come to you tonight asking for your approval to move forward to negotiate a price contract with Hollison Miller to assist us with master planning of facilities and our on-cost services as needed.
Happy to make that motion.
Were there any local, were there any local architects?
No. No, we had...
But why weren't there?
Um, this is a pretty large-scale project that we haven't had much interest. And we, our current Porter Baron's an architect out of Columbia, Tipton area. They're the ones that designed the early childhood. They've designed a couple additions to this building.
How did we put the RFP on?
It was published.
Published in paper?
Correct, yeah. Proper media, two different times, like we're required.
Any other questions?
I don't know if we've ever had a local contractor bid on any design or anything. And this is even a more extensive with the long-range plan.
The last local group that looked at things, I seem to recall that George Esser may have done that for Salmon's, Buller, Wallace, and Esser back when we were looking at incremental additions to what is now the junior high. And Salmon's, Buller, Wallace, and Esser. At that time, it was just Salmon's and Buller did the design for the Sedalia, what was then the old Sedalia Junior High, now the middle school. They designed everything but the sixth-grade wing. That's the last time we've had... You've only got, you've got Rawlings, then you've got whatever architect Septagon has.
Well, I'm sure, and I'm sure Paul, I mean, Dennis works with, I mean, obviously through Septagon, which is, and I know he, you know, he works with architects on a regular basis. I'm just wanting to make sure that, I mean, so we're going to go ahead and pick this and say, hey, go for it, give us a, you know, we're going to pay your price is what we're saying? Or are we going to bring it back for...
Oh.
No. All I'm asked for tonight is to go ahead and get a price. I will bring the architect firm back to present to the board at the next board meeting.
Well, I think that it'd be nice to have more than one architect firm actually give us a, give us a price. That's the piece, I mean, most of the time, we do that with, with...
This is a different, this is a whole different, whole different process.
And I understand what you're saying. But from a, but from the process of a taxpayer going, okay, which one is the better deal? We don't get that with this.
But price is not, cannot be by law part of the selection of this. You go off of prior experience, all those things that I've spoken about. You select a firm based off of their credentials to serve our district.
So, we could pick two of them and they could still bring it back? I mean, it's not about price, it's just we want to see two.
So, the way the process would be is we will meet with the first architect and discuss a price. If we don't like that price, then we can take it to the next firm that has, that finished second in the interview process.
I feel some of your pain back in NISA, back in the mid-'90s when I was President of the Sedalia Water Department. We essentially had the same thing. We essentially had a beauty contest for, where we had, I believe, five engineering firms that specialize in water, make presentations. The Sedalia Water Board then picked, picked a firm called Ponser Youngquist out of those five. And we had some good names, Burns &amp; McDonald, heavy hitters in the engineering, civil engineering area. And we picked one that we thought worked. We worked with them for a long time. They worked with us on the tower, the direct lines from Flat Creek or the treatment plant to that tower, the first rehab of the downtown tower. And they did an excellent job. You can't use price as a criteria.
I'm not talking about using price at this point. What I'm saying is, I understand there was a committee that was put together that said, hey, we like this proposal, we like this group. They seem like they're the best one out of... And I'm going, why wouldn't you, from a, from a standpoint, say, you know what? Here, you have these two options, pick the best two, let them propose, then you pick the best one at that point instead of... Because at this point, all they have to do is they just present, they present what they have. You know, whatever the price is, if we go, well, I think that's within a, you know, a reasonable price, nobody on that board is going to say, oh, no, that's no good. What I'm saying is, at least let it, you know, let capitalism do its work. And then we have two, two groups that we can actually look at and go, you know what? This one's better than this one. At this point, that's not the case.
But if you ask, if you bring those two groups to present, you cannot discuss price.
Okay.
Yeah. But that's what our committee was for.
Okay.
We've already looked at those three and narrowed it down to one.
Any other questions or comments? Do I hear a motion to approve, to move forward?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah, opposed.
Opposed. Did you get that? He's opposing, yes. And the face cover, that's you, again, Mr. Triplet, face cover.
Yeah, I would like to form a committee. I would like to ask some administrators and some board members to join me in establishing a criteria to, a target, so to speak, to reach in order to decide when it's time to go away from masks and face coverings and when we feel that it's safe to do so and we can still have school in person and not be in jeopardy of losing staff and students. The responsibility of the committee would be to research our local health department, our local hospital, the medical professionals to ask for their input. We would also reach out to other school districts in the state that have mask mandates and have a set criteria set up and established to determine when they are on masks and when they are out of masks. My original thought would be for myself, Mr. Curry, Mr. Heron, and Mr. Kimpton, the high school principal or a designee from his administration, junior high, Principal Mrs. Curry or a designee, and then one principal representing pre-K through 5th grade for our elementary. I just want to remove the subjectivity of this process so we have a target that we know we can shoot for. A lot of schools do positivity rate. A few schools I've heard of are doing attendance rate of staff or students. So, just wanted to open that up for discussion and obviously ask the board members for their participation in this, Mr. Heron, Mr. Kimpton, if they so choose or decline.
Make a motion to approve it.
I have one, before we approve, I have one...
I have one, before we approve, I have one comment. You wanna go first?
No, go for it, Sam.
Um, I, I, I understand being proactive by asking one principal representing pre-K through fifth grade, I think it's, I think it's necessary, and I, and I value and I appreciate Mr. Sherman's insight, I hope he's a part of this. I think we need to have, um, at least one principal from an elementary school on the committee, okay? I think that's where the focus is in this.
One per, each, each elementary principal at every building?
What, I, I'm not saying that, but I, I don't, I don't wanna skip them. If we, if we, if we decide that we need each from each building, I'm fine with that too, but I, I didn't wanna miss out on someone that has direct contact with the kids every day in one of those elementary schools. Again, I hope Mr. Sherman is involved in this. I didn't want him to replace somebody because the resolution itself speaks to K through 12. Um, I'm not going to ignore our early childhood kids, but I think we have to have someone from an elementary school that's actively involved daily with these kids on the committee. That's my only comment on that. Thank you for asking me to be part of it.
Yeah, I agree with that as well, and then, uh, one of the benefits of having Mr. Norton on there too is, uh, he's got experience at the Skyline, Huber Hunt, which is elementaries as well, and the junior high plus the high school. So, I agree with Mr. Kimpton, and I think Mr. Norton would be a, a good one and, and not necessarily a designee, cause of his multi-school experience.
What, what I was gonna, what I was gonna put out there is, and I understand the, having a committee and, and discussing it, but ultimately, you said the, the purpose of the committee would be to reach out, find out different information, talk with our local health department, and then come up with, uh, with different criteria that when we might be able to remove masks. Ultimately, up into this, to this point, we've been getting an update from Mr. Curry and yourself, giving us that information already. So, I, and then the other piece was, well, we get the, we get the discussion out, you know, in a, in a different area. I think that, as much as I'd love to have the discussion, I still think that the discussion ought to take place in the board meeting and not in a committee meeting. And, and I, I think that's the best thing for this particular, for, for this to happen. I mean, bring, bring the information, cause no matter what the committee decides, it still has to come to the board for a vote. So ultimately, you guys are already in discussion with the health board, you're already in discussion with your principals on a daily basis, to actually take that and put it in a committee for more discussion, I mean, we're, we're here, we're a committee. So my, my encouragement would be, I don't think we need a committee outside of this to make the decision. I think that what we do is we listen to your advice, we have the discussion at the board meeting, and the public gets to see it, and I, I just think it's one more, it's, it's one more piece where honestly, I don't, I don't think we need it. Um, I mean, if, if the information, we're not gonna all of a sudden come up with more additional information at that committee meeting. Um, if anything, what it's gonna do is it's gonna be discussion outside of the local board meeting, then we gotta come back, have the board meeting again. Let's kill two birds with one stone. You, you guys go ahead and bring us the information, let us have the discussion in the public, and then we make the decision.
I, I interpret-
Here's what I'll, uh, let me just say, just for clarification, I, I don't want, I'm not saying that we replace, because we will continue to bring the mask mandate to every board meeting. It's on the agenda, it's the next item on the agenda, we will vote on it again, the board has an opportunity to vote. I continually get asked, uh, I don't know if you do or any other board members, but I continually asked to, when is it gonna end? When is it gonna end? Well, I, I just wanna take some of that subjectivity instead of it's gonna end when I say it's gonna end, or when four board members choose to say it's gonna end. I would just like to put some type of data with that. We will continue to report the data. I, I just wanna get an idea, we, we have a, an abundance amount of data from last school year to where we were looking at the number of cases that we had in our school compared to, with the positivity rate in our county. And I think it's fairly clear, if we really sat down and analyzed it, of kinda when we think that we can do this, based on the number of students that were absent, based on the number of teachers that were absent, to kinda give us a target, so every time, every month we meet, it's not, you know, he's already got his mind made up and he's gonna do what he wants, because that's not true.
What I'm seeing is, let's, let's just have that, let's have that discussion in here in, in the most civil way that we possibly can.
So you don't think it's a good idea to have, like, the committee meets, because a couple of school districts throughout the state that I've kind of started watching, because they started back mask optional, and I've noted that, um, a few of them, their criteria as to when they would have to go mask mandate from the mask optional that they started, was when their attendance got below 90%, say 89%.
Please don't, don't misunderstand. Don't misunderstand, I want to have the discussion, I want to have it in the board meeting.
Okay.
I think this will give us an opportunity to have that discussion prior to the next board meeting, where it can be had again. I think it's a work session opportunity for us to get together to talk to some of the, the public health officials. Everybody's welcome to come and speak here, I don't think we're trying to, like Mr. Triplett said, replace anything. I, I won't say anything in a meeting that I won't repeat on the stage, but it gives us that opportunity to meet weekly. If, if you so choose and call me, I, I will be available to come and work if there's a development, if there's someone that wants to come in and talk with us about it. I, I look at my invitation to be on part of this committee as a work session prior to the discussion that will be had on this stage every month until we decide to, to get rid of the resolution. That's how I, that's how I interpret it.
It's a, it's research for, uh, criteria and what's, what's out there, what options and what might work best. So, without having your steering committee, it's gonna be a long discussion, coming up with different ideas, where you guys can research and come up with the top criteria or, or two or three options, and then present it to the board. So, I'm, I'm for the steering committee. It's, it's strictly just, it's a research, it's still gonna be brought up to the board, the committee's not making the decision, the board will make the decision, but you're gonna research and see what criterias are out there that are being used, what best fits our area or our region, correct?
And the way, the way I took it too, by the committee doing the research, so to speak, it sets our target, so that if the positively, whatever, the positive rate, the, you know, by the time you bring in the Health Center, the Bothwell, you know, the Pettis County Health Center, whoever, other professional, uh, healthcare professionals-
And I understand that.
Just to have a, a number to say-
But what I'm saying is, that's why we, we have working board meetings and committee meetings, in, in, in this sense, I'm, 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 I'm just opposed to it. I think we ought, I mean, once again, we have, you guys, I mean, part of your job is to bring that information to us, tell us what other board, what other school districts are doing and so forth, and yes, we're doing our own research on our own, and then we come here and we discuss it, we, we should try to have it as simple as possible.
Sure.
And part of that sunshine piece is that the, the public can see us have that discussion and know what, where we're, what, what, what they're thinking, and then the public has an opportunity to come forward and say, hey, I, I have this thought, or if, you know, if that, if we need to be able to say, you know what, we're gonna have our discussion, and then after the discussion, then we open it up to the, to, to, to the public, then we do that. But ultimately, um, I just think in this situation, I, I would, I would prefer to have the discussion in the board meeting, not in a committee meeting.
Okay, so, I, I think I understand where you're coming from, and I, I don't disagree at all. Um, the, so the conversation that we would have in that committee meeting, you wanna have as a school board meeting?
No, we wouldn't do that, that's what I'm saying. As a, as a-
I wouldn't, we wouldn't have a committee meeting, but the conversation that, if we would've formed a committee, we would've had this conversation about-
Well, then ultimately, there's going to be conversation-
So, instead of having that committee meeting outside of the board time, we gather that information from other schools, we gather that information from the Pettis County Health Department and from Bothwell, and we bring it back here and we discuss it, as an open meeting with community, with board members. Is that-
That, that's exact, I mean-
That's what you're saying, that you, that you would rather-
That's what, I mean, most of the time when you have a committee, there is discussion, obviously.
Right. Oh, sure.
And so-
Sure, I, I, I think the committee is just-
I'm just saying, please just bring the information to the board meeting and we'll discuss it.
Okay. I, I, I'm good with whatever, I, I just, I think a committee speeds things up a little bit with, uh, gives us a, an idea of where we might need to get to, because if we bring this back in October, the face covering will be coming back in October if we, if you vote to extend it another 30 days. So now we're in October and we're gonna have these discussions, um-
And what I'm saying is, a productive, a productive board meeting, a productive board meeting isn't just showing up and saying, oh, I already know how I'm gonna vote. Productive board meeting is, you know, like, for example, tonight, it would've been great while we're talking about the masks, if we already had this information, instead of a commit, instead of, okay, now we're gonna have a committee meeting, now let's get the information. The, the, there's plenty of, as we all know, there's readily, there's information readily available on all sides of this. To go ahead and bring that to a committee, and I'm not naive enough to think that, oh, there's not gonna be discussion of, well, what do you think there, what do you think there? I mean, it's, it's a matter of get the information, bring it back to the board, we discuss it, that's what a board meeting's for, and then we make our decision. And I, I think that it, I just, I worry that it does not, um, to me, it doesn't pass the, you know, just being, um, being transparent. I wanna be as transparent as possible, and I think the, the best way to do that is to bring information to our board meeting and actually discuss it in a civil way.
Now, Mr. Triplett, on the committee, I'd like to make two, two suggestions, um, if you go with the committee. First of all, we don't have our nursing coordinator on there, so I think it'd be good to have a nursing coordinator on your steering committee, cause she deals with the nurses at all the different schools and such. The other suggestion I would have is, uh, someone from SCEA, so you also have them getting information or comments, um, from the teachers for your steering committee as, as well.
I mean, obviously, I'm the only one that, that doesn't want, I mean, unless I'm wrong, I think, I feel like I'm the only, anybody else feel the same way? I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I mean, I understand, we wanna have discussion, we want it to be pro, productive, and if you say, you know what, no, Matthew, that's it, look, obviously, I wanna be part of the discussion, and, but what I want is, I, I just want it to be as transparent as possible, and I think we could do that in a better way of, I mean, of, of, you already know your staff, I mean, you have your nursing coordinator, you have your security and safety coordinator, you have your superintendents, you have access to all these other superintendents in school districts, and all this information, just bring it back to the board meeting. That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, then we have the discussion, and it's transparent. I mean, but ultimately, if, if all of you decide, no, that's not what, you know, let's not do it that way, I will, um, I mean, I'll, I'll be part of it, but I'm just saying, I think the better way would be to get the information, bring it back, and we have a transparent discussion in front of our community and so forth.
I don't care how we get there, I just want the end result to be something that we can agree on.
Absolutely.
It makes no difference to me how we get there. So I'm, I'm good with pulling this committee, I, I don't have an issue one way or the other.
I think you need to do it.
I think we can bring the information, we can gather the information, we can have the discussion, or we can, um, form a steering committee and move forward.
Question.
With the same, with the same information.
Question from Mr. Heron, are you wanting, okay, we get information from the health department, we get information from other, from other, other schools, from other medical personnel that we consult with, are you wanting them to be here, or are you wanting them to pres, to present their, their data just to Jason?
Well, I think that, I think that sometimes there's, there's a possibility if somebody would offer to come present to us, I'm open to that. But ultimately, if they gave us information for, just like on many things we make decisions on, they give it to us in, you know, in a, in a packet that goes in our board packet, we look at the information, and then the idea is, we show up to the board meeting and we discuss the information, and we make a viable, you know, a, a solution, and we're supposed to work together to help make that solution for our community. So yeah, I'm totally for somebody that wants to show up and present to our board and give us information, of course.
And you want, and you want a discussion with those people?
Well, I mean, if they wanna have a discussion, absolutely.
I think we need to, to approve the face covering steering committee as presented, I'll make that motion. I don't see those people coming to a meeting like this. I see them coming and talking to a committee. I don't think, I don't, I don't see medical experts coming to a school board meeting like this.
So as far as, you said as presented, so you're not wanting to include SCEA or, or the nursing coordinator?
If you want, if you wanna add SCEA, um, or other persons, you can, you know, we all, all accept a friendly amendment to the motion.
So, you know, I amend it, or make a motion that we include the nursing coordinator and, um, a representative from SCEA if, if they want to participate.
And I would, I would, I appreciate the friendly amendment and-
So we have a motion, and Michael has made an amendment to that, is that correct? To add those other two areas?
And now that just, that whole package needs a, needs a second?
Second. So do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. And Matthew's nay. And the next is the Board of Education Resolution to Wear Face Coverings Indoors.
Again, we just bring this back, um, to revisit every 30 days, which we will continue to do, it's my recommendation with the positivity rate, um, in our, in our area, that we continue with the mask mandate in place for another 30 days. Right now, sir?
Yeah, just approach the podium, like I said at the beginning.
Can you hear me? Okay. My name's David Goodson, and, um, I'd just like to ask you guys, honestly, you all know better, I mean, Todd, I'd expect more out of him, Mr. Pyle, I've had nothing but respect for you, but you guys, I thought you guys were stand-up guys, I really did, even you, Steve. But you guys have proved over and over again that you're just being stupid about this. You know there's no common sense, logical reason for these kids to wear a mask. You know darn good and well, did any of you watch college football this weekend? Did any of you play in a golf tournament this weekend? Did any of you go to a Chiefs game or watch it or out in public? Did you see anybody with a mask on? If you did, it was by choice. But the mass majority of the public knows better, has enough common sense, and all you guys are doing is proving how pig-headed you are, how stubborn you are, and how much you like the limelight, because you know what? Nobody cared about the school board meetings, nobody cared about the, what was going on. You guys have brought the attention on and you like it, but you guys could stop it, you could just say, we, we agree with freedom, we agree with it, and we're just gonna say it's an option, it's really that simple. And I'm disappointed in you guys, committees, if you guys were trying to function in the real world as a business, you would fail in 15 days. You guys are gonna get everybody and their brother on a committee to get together and talk about something that you all should decide? No, you guys should take the courage and make the vote and do it. You, you guys are just absolutely failing this community and failing these kids, and it's disgusting, and I really did. Even you, Jason, I thought you were better than this, man. I've heard you talk about the Freedom Fighters, and you've said things before, man, they hit me, I was like, man, this guy's a true patriot. You guys ain't doing it, man, you're just, you're out there just screwing these kids, and it's gotta stop. I mean, it's gotta stop. You're forcing people to file lawsuits, you're forcing all kinds of stuff, even the attorney, the state attorney general's office has had enough. When's it gonna be enough? You're not gonna be happy until you get a lawsuit brought onto the school district. You can, you can do the things you've done with your AD to me, Steve, that's wrong, and I know it's wrong, you know it's wrong. You guys have got to stop it. I just wanted to talk to you guys. I'm not bringing you facts. There's so many facts out there, you guys can look them up, you know what they are. It's ridiculous. And Sam, I know you don't wear a mask everywhere you go. Todd, you don't either, but you guys want these kids to come here and play this game every day and they get out of the school and they take it off. It's wrong. That's all I've got to say. It's wrong.
Hi, my name is Fred Pena and, uh, I, I kind of enjoyed that a little bit. He can speak to the passion that I can't speak with. And, uh, I am more, uh, or I should say, less passionate, uh, less emotional, uh, but I still, um, have the same beliefs. The lawsuit brought against this board, um, by the attorney general discusses that it is your role to protect the liberties of the people. It's, it's not like I heard last, last month from all those speaking in favor of the mask mandate who wanted to err on the side of caution. That's not your job. Your job is to protect our liberties. It's our, the parent's job to protect the safety of their children. And if you recall from the, the vote that you had them, the poll that you had the parents answer, the majority of them wanted no mask mandate. Let it be optional. That's what they would choose. At the same time, you, you questioned, well, we just want to follow the CDC and the American Association of Pediatrics because they won't lead us astray, uh, lead us away. They've done all the studying for a long time. But you look at their studies, they're not very strong. They ignore studies that show the opposite, that masks do not work. Or I should say more specifically, that there is no statistical significance that a mask mandate works, or that a mask works. The lawsuit brought against you discusses that when you take away liberties of people, it can't be unreasonable, it can't be compresious. What does that mean? It means you have to consider these facts. You can't just throw up your hands and ignore them and let somebody else make that decision like you want to do in this committee. You have to look at the facts, you have to look at the harm that's potential, and is the solution that you're proposing the least restrictive method of doing that? As was brought up in that lawsuit, how many deaths of children have there been in this state because of COVID? Five. How many deaths have there been because of car accidents? Forty-nine in the same period of time. If all of you drove here today, you're hypocrites. I know that a mask mandate is not a reasonable thing because our society is okay with us driving. I'm okay with you driving. You should be okay with our, our children not wearing masks. You should vote no.
My name is Gail Jackson. I don't have anything prepared because I wasn't planning to speak, but I'd like to talk to the people that are going to be watching this. I'm a United States Air Force veteran. My husband is, is a veteran. I have three brothers who served in the Navy. I have a nephew in the Navy right now. I have a nephew that was a corpsman in Afghanistan, fortunately before dictator Biden was in office and was the dictator in chief. I have uncles that have served in the military. The genealogy of my family goes back to the Revolutionary War. I am a daughter of the American Revolution. I have, uh, relatives on my father's side who were, one of which was an aide-de-camp to George Washington. So when it comes to the rights and fighting for this country, it's in my blood. So I'm going to tell all you people right now, you better start standing up, whether it's locally with your school board and have your voices heard, or it's to your health board and have your voices heard, or get out and vote, or go to your state capitol. You stand up, you stand up in Sedalia, you stand up in Pettis County, you stand up in Missouri, you stand up in this country and you start taking back your rights because pretty soon, you're not going to have any of it. It's not going to be about just a mask. And it's not going to be about just a jab in the arm. It's going to keep going, it's going to get to be more. And every one of you, except for what I've seen, Matthew Herron, who understands what it means to have individual rights that are protected by our constitution, you people are part of the problem. And when this goes bad, because it did in Nazi Germany, my brother-in-law just turned 80 years old a few weeks ago. He was a child in a concentration camp in World War II. He knows what it was like. And yes, it started first with the Jews. They took the Jews, then they took the Catholics, they took their businesses, they mandated, they mandated where they could go, what they could do, what they could do with their bodies. They took the children of the Germans, of which I'm a proud German heritage, but they took the children and then they had the Hitler Youth and they indoctrinated them. What is happening in this country today is not just about this mask. It's not just about this little school board. But if you don't have the guts to start standing up for your country and for the citizens of this country, we're going to end up no better off than what Nazi Germany was. You can say this is overblown, you can call it a conspiracy theory, but let me tell you something. Be a student of history and you will understand that what's happening right now in this country has happened before. History does and will repeat itself unless you people start doing the right thing for the children and for the people and the citizens that you represent.
Thank you. Your time's up.
My name is Ruth Dugan and I want to speak specifically to you, Mr. Tripoli. I've sat in your office with problems with my child and you had told me while I was there, maybe I should get him on some ADHD medication. That was your response to me and the issues I was having. I was also asking from the time he was in first grade on what help I can give my child to help him at home. All I was told was we have programs in place here at school. I took my child, he was tested through our schooling for a learning disability and he scored low. Then it came back, I took him up to Kansas City, we had the same testing ran up there and it came back, scores were very similar. But you know what was ruled out during that? He was not ADHD. I didn't follow your recommendation then and I have a really hard time following your recommendation now with the mask because you were wrong the first time, you're wrong now.
Hello, I'm Michelle Quattlebaum. I'm just confused on what the whole committee is needed for. You're just going to get facts from this person and facts from this person and that side and this side and the medical side and these, like, it's just going to go on and on and on forever. What, what are you waiting to hear? What, are you waiting for everyone, the health department, the hospital, all these people to come back and be like, COVID's gone, everybody? We can finally go back to normal. It's just going to keep going and keep going and you just keep wanting to get all these opinions from everyone, like, I just don't understand what your end result is. What are you waiting for? When are you going to make their education more important than this? It's crazy. I mean, if you sit there and actually think about it, it's crazy. Everybody comes to school, it's like the kids get to have a normal life, but when they go to school, it's like prison. But then as soon as you leave school, you can go play with your friends and it's just, it's crazy. And for you people to keep playing along is just, it makes me question why you guys are up there, honestly. Like, you're supposed to be in charge of everyone's educate, their kid's education and these are the decisions that you're making, even though it's crazy. So what's the, what's the end result? What do you want to hear? What are you waiting to hear? That it's gone, that COVID's over? They're just going to keep coming up with new variants over and over and over. They're going to keep coming up with emergencies so that they can stay in control. And just like the lady before said, you know, it's, they're gonna, I don't, I don't know. I just don't understand what you guys are doing, honestly. Can anyone answer what you guys are waiting to hear? What the committee is going to tell you? When they say it's gone?
That's the criteria that we're trying to establish through a committee, through discussion.
But you're just, it's just, it is, it's just dragging it out forever. I mean, just when are you finally going to say, you know what? These kids are missing school, they're missing being children at school, they're missing education because they're being quarantined and, I mean, like, when is their education just going to be more important? That's what you guys are in charge of.
Hello, my name's Jenny Smith. I'm a Smith Cotton alumni. I just wanted to come up to let you guys know that I feel that the mask mandates are more than trying to keep people safe. I mean, there's evidence out there showing that it doesn't necessarily keep kids safe or anybody. And I feel that it's more teaching the kids to comply with whatever they're told to do from an authority figure and just mindlessly follow that. I've started an organization in Sedalia called Speak Up Sedalia and we're doing a series of peaceful protests. You can join us if you would like, Wednesday, the 22nd, from 12 to 1:00 at the courthouse. If you can come during your lunch break, I'm speaking to anyone who might be watching online. And I just hope all of you board members find it in you to do the right thing and make the right decision.
Hello, my name is Valerie Corby. I really hadn't prepared to come up here, but there's been a lot on my heart as a mother and a grandmother. My son was the class of 20. My son is hearing impaired and relies on visual cues to learn because he can't read lips if they're not available. I look at the school board representing education being your number one job. We're not a hospital. I, I don't, I, I don't disagree that who, each, each person feels that they can come up with exactly the facts that line up with what they think. It's true. It should be a choice. If, if your masks work, then that's fine. But we have seen children at the skating rink, at the swimming pools, we've seen them at birthday parties, they're everywhere. They're not dropping dead. We're not seeing that, that was put on the news in the beginning. We were scared in the beginning and we didn't know any better. I was terrified, you know? I have elderly parents that I care for. We all survived COVID, we took care of ourselves. There will people, people will die, you know, that's a fact of life. They told me my son would at birth, so I've already maybe crossed that and I'm a little further into accepting that that's part of living. But, um, the mental issues that are being caused by children, not only from telling them they're going to kill grandma, good God, but by not letting them see your face, they miss out on expressions, they miss out on smiles, they miss out on learning, they miss, if they're not diagnosed as hearing impaired or with auditory neuropathy, they're missing out. And that's your primary job is to educate our children. That is your job. We will keep them safe. I think it should be a choice for each person to do what's best for their child. And, and I think that you all work for us and I know your job's not easy, but, um, at the end of the day, you know, I think we've seen, I think we've seen things that we're not acting like we've seen right now today. So I, I just pray that you, um, it's about the children, it's not about us and being right. It's about our children and making good, smart, wise choices to keep us all healthy. And that's all.
Any other comments from the board members regarding the, um, resolution to continue to wear face coverings indoors?
I'd like to hear. I know that during our earlier discussion, the, Mr. Tripoli, you mentioned that, I mean, really your, your resolve for the mask had to do with quarantine. Will you speak in regard to the quarantining? Because that, that kind of goes in line with, with what I heard you say about the masks. Am I right?
Yeah, I mean...
So what, what is the quarantining rules?
Currently, the way we understand it, the quarantine rules are, um, if you are, uh, can remain three feet of social distancing, although we hear there is guidance coming that clarifies that it is six feet, as it always has been. I've not gotten that information, so as of right now, we are masking, um, other than those times that we can be settled and be three feet apart indoors only. Any outdoor activities are not masked. Any physical activity, indoor activities are not masked. So when you are inside, you cannot be within three feet, uh, you must have a mask on. The quarantine guidelines, Mr. Curry speaks, uh, he can speak to a little bit better than I can because he works with it daily and it just, he repeats it so many times. But there is a, a quarantine up to, uh, two weeks, or if you're positive, it's 10 days of those people that are around. What the masks do, in my opinion, is a school like this that we're in that has 1,100 to 1,200 students daily, another 100 staff members, it, it guarantees that we keep the doors open. It guarantees that we do all those things that I've heard are important, which is try to educate kids. If, if it goes back to the six feet, which I'm pretty sure it's going to, um, then we're more likely to, to be in masks most of the day because our rooms aren't big enough for that. But, um, some are, some aren't because we just can't separate. But i- if, if you're positive and you're, you know, we have to report to the Pettis County Health Department who is within that six feet for a cumulative, uh, 15 minute over 24 hours. It's not you and I have to be standing next to each other consecutively for 15 minutes. It's if you and I are together cumulatively for 15 minutes in that, in that day, then we would be considered a close contact.
Within, within the distance?
Within that distance, unmasked.
So it's three feet.
And it's both parties have to be masked. So that's where our mask optional, if you, if, if you don't want to wear a mask, I choose to wear a mask, the way the quarantine guidelines are set up, it still eliminates both of us. And right now, even if you're vaccinated and I'm not, and I'm masked and you're not, we're still both close contact.
I know, I've asked you this question, I heard it again. What happens if we don't, if, if you don't give that information to the health department?
It's considered a misdemeanor. That's your question. This, sir, we're not answering questions from the audience, thank you. That is true. It's, it's, I, I, I don't disagree. There's, there's no policing it. It's, it's, I think, you know, it's like when you coach, do you tell kids to break the rules until the referee calls it? Or do you teach the rules the way they are?
I think the, I think the real issue...
This is a rule that, that state statute says that we will follow and, and as a board member, as a superintendent of schools, and anybody else in their capacity on this stage, I, I would hope that we would understand that and follow those rules.
Well, I, I think there comes a point, if there's an unethical rule, then you have to make that decision, that decision as well.
But there again, it's not our place to decide ethics or...
Well, I, I, let me, let me finish. I think the key is, is whether or not it's okay to quarantine healthy kids. And one thing that I've, that I've encouraged parents is, you know, I, I wouldn't let them quarantine my healthy kid. And I, and I think that it's not our place, it's the Pettis County Health Department to do that. So I really don't think it's our place to, to sit there and police this. And I think that's where we disagree. I don't think it's our place. And I would encourage this board to not make it our business to police the, I mean, to do the job of the health department. It's not our posi, it's not our place. I mean, that's, that's my position. I mean, that's, that's my position. And I would encourage this, this board to say, you know what? That's fine, you have these, you have these guidelines, you have these, these, these pieces. Pettis County Health Department, you go ahead and, you do your, you do your job, we're going to do our job, we're going to teach. And, and ultimately, it's up to them if they want to quarantine kids. Not, it's not our job.
And I don't disagree, it is their job. But when they communicate that this child is quarantined, then we can't allow them to be at school. That's our job.
Yeah, I understand, but, but what we don't have to go through, we don't have to go through cameras-
Then we have lots of students that are missing, we have staff that's missing, we have bus drivers that's missing. And then it's hard to be in person. The goal is to be in person.
That's right.
I would suggest that Mr. Heron write down his thoughts, and if he's wanting the board to either ignore or not follow the law, which we all took an oath to do, I think you need to put that in writing and we need to vote on it, Mr. Heron.
You made a very valid point. We also swore him to uphold and defend the Constitution, which you apparently know nothing about as an attorney. And let me, what is, what is interesting, that also falls in line with personal liberties. You are the same individual that has decided to tell us that you didn't want people in our community that were not vaccinated. You sat here and said that. The other thing, you sit here and you attack people in our community because they have a different opinion. So then you have the audacity to attack me on this, on this board? Because you think that I'm encouraging people to break the law? That is not the case. I'm encouraging people to have freedom and liberty. And maybe you should go hang out with Joe Biden in Afghanistan. Because personally, I'm sick of your socialistic crap.
All right, let's, let's get back to the agenda. So are there any other comments by board members? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve the Board of Education resolution as presented to wear face coverings indoors for the next 30 days.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Barbara will do a roll call vote on this.
Kenny Kofelt? Scott Gardner?
Aye.
Matthew Heron?
No.
Sam Kimpton?
Aye.
Michael Stees?
Aye.
Barbara Schrader is aye. Diana Nichols?
Aye.
The most. Next up on the agenda is items for information only, Mrs. Gilmore. Are we going down to the-
Devin, is this where you're presenting?
Okay, yeah. Board will need to move to the audience to lead the overhead.
Good evening. First of all, I want to applaud all Sedalia 200 staff for an amazing year. Last year, I know all of us were impacted by COVID-19. But, so we're going to talk a little AmesWeb data. Before we get started, what you will see here is our first year of complete data since COVID-19. With this, it's really hard to compare year-to-year data because you're comparing a different set of data. And even with comparing student or class by class, you're still comparing different sets of data because your, the test measures are different for each grade level. So as you see in your packet and in the presentation, what you will see is three different colors. The first color is the red, which is your tier three at-risk students. Your yellow tier is your moderate at-risk, and then your tier one is your low at-risk. So initially, what we want to see is the green going from small to large, obviously. And then we want our yell, tier three, our red data to get smaller as the year progresses. As we have seen, as I've been an educator or teaching and as an instructional coach, and now as a curriculum director, we always see that the beginning of the year, triangles look very similar to this. And as the year progresses, based on the interventions put in place, we notice that our triangle grows, and it's pretty exciting. When we talk about the impact of COVID, this grade level last year were kindergartners in the 2019, 2020 school year. So these first graders last year lost a quarter as well as other students, but they lost a quarter of instruction. And as a previous kindergarten teacher, that fourth quarter is really crucial because that's when they're really starting to learn how to read. They're learning a lot more sight words, they're learning, again, just to, to learn how to read. So that foundational piece, and we'll talk about that a little bit later, but what we've done with our curriculum is we've tried to fine tune and focus and be intentional in our curriculum. And here's second grade data. Again, notice the, the movement of the triangle. Third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade. So as a district, Becky and I have created three district goals. These are on, ongoing instructional goals, K-12. Our first one is having viable curriculum, and we have aligned it to our CSIP. First one is having viable curriculum, the second one is developing common formative assessments, and the third one is developing assessment capable learners. So these are our focuses, K-12. But specifically, if you go to the next slide, this is a timeline for when we are, each year, what we're implementing and what we are progressing through. So the first year, this year, we are evaluating and having ongoing professional development. Next year, we are going to implement MSEP-6. And so this is a planning year for all of that, getting everything aligned with those requirements for MSEP-6. Next year, it's full-on implementation for MSEP-6. We're going to evaluate our data and look at other critical components in our district. And then the year after that, we're going to redefine. We're going to have annual evaluations and curriculum audits. From our understanding, that's a big part of MSEP-6, is really looking at our curriculum and auditing it. And so as the years go, we will relook at this, reevaluate it, and adjust our goals accordingly. So specifically, we have our district goals, and then specifically in elementary, we have really fine tuned or refocused four goals in elementary. Our first one is our district's unit of assessment, our district curriculum. We have a scope and sequence that our teachers follow, and this just ensures that we are very transient in our district as well as outside of our district. So this ensures that there is no gaps in our curriculum. We also strive to have fidelity to our curriculum. Our second goal for elementary is guided reading instruction, which also known as small group instruction. This is solely where you're teaching your kids to learn to read. And there are different levels of guided reading. Math fluency, we, fidelity to our whole group instruction, obviously through calendar math and other math fluency games. And then our last goal is to incorporate CAGEN, which is cooperative learning. And so we were very fortunate to have a district reset this year with CAGEN. We had two amazing CAGEN trainers, certified trainers, come down and provide professional development for teachers. And so using that cooperative, cooperative learning research shows that is great for student success. So just to kind of end it, again, we have really redefined our curriculum, really have been intentional of what we are teaching. We have had district priorities, K-5, for many years. Last year, the state had said, here are some district, or here are some state priority standards. And when comparing their district, our district priority standards to the state, we were sitting pretty well. So very excited for what we are doing here in Sedalia. And we've got amazing staff, amazing teachers, amazing staff in our district. So look forward to another great year. Any questions? Well, it's- We are still currently testing, AmesWeb testing for this fall. I know I've had several conversations with second grade teachers, and they know that these are, these students are really truly impacted by COVID. So I think at first is identifying those students that are struggling. Our instructional coaches have done an amazing job, along with our building administrators, to really look and see, along with teachers, to see who truly needs those interventions, whether it's an enrichment, whether it's, you know, on-grade level work or those struggling learners. So we truly look at that, we look at data, we look at AmesWeb, we look at reading levels and compare what their need is through our, through our data team meetings. Particularly with this, last year, we've also have, have done a review from kindergarten, what they missed fourth quarter. We embedded that in our curriculum last year with first grade. And we've also noticed that it was pretty spot on, so we've kept that because we know that summertime, you know, several students do attend summer school, but we, we try to play catch-up. And so we really, truly, the work that the instructional coaches have done by looking at our curriculum has really helped. And so we've kept that through our scope and sequence into our curriculum. Any other questions? Correct. And, correct, it is a composite score. And the thing with the first grade, the only test measure that is considered with a composite is oral reading fluency. There's other test measures that they test as well, but the only composite is this. So this is just a snippet or a piece of where students are. Again, we take this data, we take reading level data, we take all other data, unit assessment data, and we look to see how students are holistically as a student. This is just one piece of it. Again, I'd just like to applaud all, all Sedalia 200 staff, the teachers, the administrators, the instructional coaches, everybody. It's, we're one big happy family. So, thank you.
Next on the agenda for information is the summer school summary, Mr. Dr. Fraley?
Yeah, I just thought I'd bring that to the board's attention. Summer school, we had a very big participation rate in summer school this year, which is good. Just over 42,000, almost 43,000 contact hours of summer instruction. That generated, that goes in, that ADA gets applied to our district level ADA for our formula payments. And it's, will generate an estimated $217,490 in state revenue. We did have $164,000 in total expenses, but we should see an overall revenue increase by having summer school of $53,048. And I just wanted to make you guys aware-
Good to know, good to know.
Uh, we, we have made class sizes even smaller during summer, employed more teachers than we have in the past, but we're still, you know, realizing a positive return financially and with the children.
Any questions for Dr. Fraley?
How many, how many students were in the summer school programs?
I don't have those numbers. I have the, I didn't write the numbers down, just put the hours down, because that's how the ADA is calculated. But as far as numbers, we're talking, there were over 200 kids this year. Now, that's, part of that's credit recovery for high school. And then we have our enrichment, which was 150, 160 this year. Attendance goes up and down, families take vacations, et cetera, et cetera, during those times. And reading camp was very well attended as well. And you also add into that driver's education. And in this summer, JROTC did not have their camp, but we can claim that too when they do, in years that they do.
Thank you. Think you're up again with the Midwest Computec donation?
Yeah, I just wanted to recognize Mr. Greg Miller, President, Midwest Computec. And they came to the district to find a way they could help out. They gave us a very generous donation of $5,000 to support the needs of our students. They wanted to support as many as possible. Working with Mr. Miller, Midwest, we've set up a, another activity count, a student needs fund. The first thing we're going to target is the Student Council's Thanksgiving Basket Program and try to expand that to more families across, across our district.
Very good. And Mr. Pyle?
Yes. I'm honored to talk tonight on behalf of our friends from the First Christian Church as our Sedalia School District 200 team has wanted to give them a sincere appreciation for the anonymous donor, donation that they made from the church. The former church member had passed away, but it made it known that they wanted to, in their passing, that they wanted to donate money to our Hope Fund. So the church did honor that request. The Hope Fund is designated to meet the needs of our students that meet the criteria for McKinney-Bento. And that church member, former church member left $4,500 at our Hope Fund, we use in a worthy manner. So just very appreciative of that church member.
Very much, thank you. And Mr. Triple?
Yeah, I have the next three donations, actually. I'll just run right through them.
Sure.
A huge thank you to the Snyder family and the entire Interstate Studio family. They donated 10,000 pencils to the school district with the word responsibility on those. They were dispersed through all levels of our, of our school, from elementary all the way up to our high school, took some as well. So we thank them, always great supporters and longtime friends of the district. Also, I would like to thank First United Methodist Church. They gave our staff goodie bags for the start of school and much appreciated. They too are very good friends of the district and always have a helpful- and always have a helping hand to, to help support our students and our staff. And last but not least, we ended the week last week with gift bags for our staff from our very own Sedalia School District Foundation. So to Deidre and her board that put in time stuffing bags and making sure that our staff feels appreciated. We thank you for that effort and it doesn't go unnoticed. Thank you very much.
And then the last item for information was Mrs. Curry.
Yes, the last donation, Junior High would like to thank Macollister Construction for their donation of $3,000. That will help sponsor the Students of the Month program at the junior high. We have nine teams. They each pick, nominate two students a month, a total of 18 students a month, that will now receive a T-shirt because of this generous donation and a gift card. So we're very, very appreciative of that donation.
Thank you. And I will now hear a motion to adjourn to close executive session.
Make a motion to close executive session. Executive session 610, 021, one legal, three personnel, 13 protected records, 14 records protected, closed by law.
And Barbara, the, oh, I need a second.
Second.
And now the roll call vote.
Kenny Kofelt?
Scott Gardner?
Aye.
Matthew Heron?
Aye.
Sam Kimpton?
Aye.
Barbara Schrader's aye. Michael Stees?
Aye.
Diana Nichols?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank.